Order. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge Allegiance? Grant O'Beart, ready, ten.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shannon, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember, Vea Senor?
Here.
Mayor Protem McCall?
I'm here.
Mayor Austin?
Here.
Councilmember Edmonds?
I'm here.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to item number four, approval of the agenda. We're gonna pull item number five B. We're gonna table it till next meeting.
I'll move to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Move on to item number five A. Oath for appointment of Councilmember Simone Alex.
Thank you, Mayor Austin, City Council, city staff, and the residents of Fillmore. I am honored to be able to administer this oath this evening. Please raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
Please state your name.
Simone Elizabeth Kerick.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance?
And I will bear true faith and allegiance?
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely?
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation?
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion?
And that I will, will, and faithfully?
And that I will, will, and faithfully?
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties?
Upon which?
Upon which?
I am about to enter.
I am about to enter.
This completes the oath. Congratulations, Simone.
Well, welcome aboard. Okay, we're gonna move on to item number five C, a proclamation regarding November 2021 as Native American Heritage Month in the city of Fillmore. We're, we're, we cabled that. Whereas indigenous people who have lived along California central and inland coast for all at least 11,000 years and were the first to create sophisticated commerce through trade, and whereas the city of Fillmore was incorporated on the ancestral lands of Shumash people, particularly near the village of Sespe, located the Santa Clara River between two of the tributaries near the villages that were similarly inhabited by Piru, Mupu, and Saticoy Shumash peoples, and whereas Native Americans have made distinct and significant contribution both locally, nationally, and worldwide in many fields, including academic scholarships, agriculture, astronomy, art, business, education, ecology, engineering, environmentalism, forestry, government, medicine, music, poetry, science, and traditional cultures, and whereas the city of Fillmore encourages citizens to acknowledge and celebrate Native American Heritage Month to foster education, understanding, and relationship building with the Native American community and members of our larger indigenous community, and whereas Native American Heritage Month has been established at the national level with a presidential proclamation to recognize the significant contributions and rich legacies of Native Americans. Now, if there are, therefore, it resolved that I, Mark Austin, mayor of the city of Fillmore, hereby proclaim November as National American Heritage Month. Okay, we're gonna move on to item number five D, report to council regarding the emergency repairs for well number eight and a request that the city council determine that the emergency remains pursuant to the California Public Contract Code, section 22050.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here to provide you a report on the ongoing repairs that have been happening with well eight. So I'm pleased to inform you that the information that we received from the contractor as of October 29th, most of the items that were still pending have been completed. So the sanding content in the well has been reduced to an acceptable level. The cement lines are all back into place. The new equipment, bowls, column, tubes, and shaft of the mortar have been installed as well. And then we're currently right now at the point where we are taking water, raw water samples to make sure that there is no constituents in the water that may not be acceptable. And right after that, there's gonna be a chlorination process that will take place. And if everything goes as planned, we should have the results within 24 to 48 hours. However, there's a holiday this week, so it might take a little bit longer. But we are anticipating to have the well back up and running by Monday or Tuesday of next week. And my hope is that I can come back at the December 14th meeting to ask council to declare the emergency done. So that is the report that I have for you today. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Any questions for staff? Okay, thank you, Erica.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number six, public comments. I have one public speaker on this, on just the public comments. John McKinnon? You can come up to the... And just, you'll have, you'll have three minutes. When you get to a minute, yellow will come on in the red.
We'll do it in two minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm Jack McKinnon. My mother and father worked for railroad. My father bought the movie industry here. I was in the movie industry for a long time myself. My mother worked with Dave and Truus for a long time. I heard, my mom had just passed away, I heard that the train was going. And I was just, I didn't investigate long enough, but I, I've come up with ways of making a lot of money with trains. And, but I don't, I guess that's a problem. So I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, I think they got it handled. I thought they were in trouble, and I don't think they are. And, but the avenue is always open, but they needed somebody to help them out with some finances. I got a way to help them out. I'll see you outside, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to item number seven, consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment on item seven D.
Okay, you wanna pull it?
Sure, I will pull that item.
Okay.
So the comment I'd like to make, I just wanted to actually appreciate staff's efforts regard on informing the council about moron levels in the water. It appears that we've, we are, we are at the point of notification for, for city jurisdictions, but not at a point of, you know, that's at a level of any kind of endangerment or, you know, anything has to be done to the public. So I just wanna say thank you for that. We appreciate getting, getting these notifications and having them on a regular basis and, and to keep that monitoring going on the city. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Can I entertain a motion to consent calendar?
I'll move to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item number eight A.
Mayor, if I could interrupt for one second, I apologize. On five D, the report that Erica Herrera just gave, we, there's actually two, a recommendation that a decision has to be made by council. So if you could go back, I can read the recommendations, but we'll need a vote on the council.
Okay.
It's required by the public contract code because this is an emergency and we weren't following the typical procurement process.
Okay.
So if the work is not done, we needed a four-fifths vote to determine that the emergency conditions were ongoing and to continue foregoing bidding. If the work is done, we would request the council to find that the emergency has been remedied and direct staff to prepare a resolution finding that the emergency has ended, and go ahead and authorize the mayor to sign that resolution once it's been prepared.
Okay. Do we need a vote on just one of them or both?
Just one of them.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the first one or the second one?
So I'll make the recommendation that the city council receive the Assistant City Manager's report and determine by a four-fifths vote that the emergency conditions are ongoing.
Do I have a motion? Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
I apologize for not speaking up earlier. I was still getting my bearings.
Erica, did you want to have the interpreter come up and speak? I think we forgot that.
That's okay. I mean, we've, yeah.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item number eight A, new business, consideration approval of highway maintenance agreement with Caltrans for implementation ordinance number 20927 to regulate parking along State Route 126 through Fillmore.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and welcome aboard for our new council member. Very excited to have you here. I'm Roxanne Hughes. I'm your city engineer. And I'm here to present tonight on an item that, that we've talked about before, and it's just reaching fruition finally. And this is a requirement, in order for the city to place signage in the Caltrans right-of-way, we needed an encroachment permit. And in order to get the encroachment permit, the first thing that we had to do was adopt a resolution by the city council saying that they wanted to limit parking and put up the no parking signs. So we did that and submitted the encroachment permit application, and then Caltrans said, oh, we need you to enter into a highway maintenance agreement that you'll forever maintain the signs that you put in our right-of-way as your signs. And so I've been working on that maintenance agreement. The city attorney helped, and the legal department at Caltrans, and we included in the maintenance agreement the plan that we previously approved by city council when we adopted the resolution. And just as a reminder, the, the intent here is where there's all, there's already a lot of no parking prohibitions out there, red curb, where you're not allowed to park like in front of the businesses. Other areas along the highway, there are some residences and people do park, but the big trucks park too, and it causes issues and safety problems. And so what this no parking prohibition that we've adopted and we're looking to implement is to put up a restriction to say for our parking for oversized and commercial vehicles. And so we have begin and end zones, and on the exhibit attached to the maintenance agreement, that's where all the green lines are, and the red lines are existing no parking that's already out there. So what this does is adds these limited parking in area, to keep the trucks from parking there, but to allow the residents to park there. So that's the basis of this item, and the staff report is before you, and we're requesting the city council's approval to sign the highway maintenance agreement with Caltrans to allow us to implement the signage.
Any questions for staff?
I just have one question, Roxanne. For the Caltrans encroachment permit, is that a one-time permit, or how often do we?
It's, it's a one-time permit to authorize to install the signs?
Okay.
Within their right-of-way. And then this HMA, the Highway Maintenance Agreement, takes over from there and says that we'll maintain them, or if we get in their way, they'll move them. Well, I'm also coordinating timeline with, Caltrans is about to come through with that striping bike lane project. It's been delayed. When we set this up, I talked about that before too. We haven't talked about it in a while, but Caltrans has plans to come through and do shoulder repairs and bike lane striping all the way from Hallock Drive through Fillmore to County Line. And that project is now rescheduled to go into construction and get a contractor on board in the winter of '21, '22. So like, over, in the next few months. And we're coordinating the installation of this project to be in tandem with the installation of their project for full coordination of the signs, like where we can use posts and where, as we, our contractor installs our signs, we can use their traffic control and not have, you know, it's, it's supposed to be for cost effectiveness, and full coordination of they're putting up signs, we're putting up signs. I didn't wanna like, sign the world. And so I've been trying really hard to get the project schedules aligned, and they're behind schedule for about, by about a year now. But then we've also been moving through the legal to get the documents done, so. Any other questions? Yes?
Roxanne, there's a section between Vic's tires east where there are just two houses that are right, I think they took away the sidewalk, or they took away the easement in the front, and they're older people, there's no alley, no garage, and they fall a lot. And, and I've been trying to get Caltrans to put in a sidewalk there, or at least a better curb section, because it's a dip. Is there any way that you can entice them to do that as they're doing this project?
You brought that forward a while ago, and I actually had a meeting with Caltrans officials. Like, we went out, we stood at the project site, we looked at what was going on. The area that needs regrading is not in the Caltrans right-of-way, it's their private property, and there never was a sidewalk there, and there's an elevation difference too.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of things in the way. In order to put a sidewalk, you need a retaining wall, and it's outside, the sidewalk area would be outside Caltrans right-of-way and on their property. So we, we weren't able to move forward because it's, it's not something that is fundable or, you know, they're, I'm sure that they would probably give right-of-way to Caltrans, but Caltrans would not have funding to do something like that. That would only benefit two homes.
Well, they say that they used to have a ramp down, but when we widened the road, it took that away. So they must have taken some of their property or something that used to be theirs. So I should just tell them they're gonna have to fix it, or the rent, the owners of that property will have to...
They, they own the property up to the edge of the road, and they can make improvements.
Okay, thanks.
So, real quick, I think you covered it, but we're looking at in the wintertime getting this put through?
Yeah, the, it said winter 2021 on the last quarterly update that I had, and we have another one coming up. But I reached out to the project manager as well, and I'm waiting to hear back on more specifics on the timing, but it's supposed to be in the next few months though. But I think they have to bid it and get a contractor, so we probably won't actually see them mobilize until springtime.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure that you're going to be walking this project through start to finish, because I don't wanna have what we had before where there was things being covered, and then the city had to go pay for it, you know what I mean, that whole fiasco?
Right.
So I wanna make sure that you're on top of it, because I don't wanna have to double duty things and pay when we can do it on their dime.
Yeah.
Good memory.
Yeah, no, I got a good memory for something. Thank you, Roxanne.
Understood.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. Will do.
I wanted to make a comment, actually. I was really happy to see this already, because...
Yeah.
Rookie move. I, I was really happy to see this because we lived in the valley for some time, and I saw terrible accidents when trucks would park overnight, and, you know, people would get really tired or come around the curve and not see it, and there were cars that had actually gone under the semis. So I'm hoping that it can reduce some of that and a little bit of stress on the drivers. You know, I know that's ancillary to what this is about, but I was, you know, happy to see it. So, thank you.
Yes. Yeah, our chair's department has been instrumental in helping bring this forward and identify, you know, that it's a needed improvement. Yeah.
I will move that we, with staff's recommendation.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item number eight B, approval of consulting contract for preparation of potable water system, risk and resilience assessment, and emergency response plan.
That's me too, so I'll stay right here. Okay, so again, you have a full report before you. This one has to do with, we're, we're a bit tardy, unfortunately, with filing something that's called the Water System Risk and Resilience Assessment, and also on follow-on to the RRA that they call an Emergency Response Plan, which is an ERP. And this is kind of a robust piece of legislation that was passed at the federal level, down to the state level, for all communities with water systems, more than 3,300 persons to prepare and file this risk and resiliency assessment and its companion document, the Emergency Response Plan. And they were really due a few months ago, and the water board reached out to us and notified us that we were out of compliance for not having filed it. And so I was able to reach out to other water purveyors in Ventura County and say, hey, who did you guys use to get this done? It's kind of a specialty consulting profession, and there are companies that do mainly this. And on, city of Camarillo actually had gone through the full SOQ RFP process and got three proposals, and interviewed, and selected a consultant, and said they've been, they're just about done, and they're filing theirs late too, but they're getting done. A lot of us kinda got caught behind the eight ball with this, but they've been very happy with AARC. And then, so I reached out to that consultant, and I spoke with them, and got resumes and a proposal, and they're very highly qualified, do, do this all the time. AARC, because this is their niche and something that they do quite a bit, especially in California, you know, they have relationships and good standing with EPA staff that are in charge of the program, and they were able to call them and say, hey, we're gonna help Fillmore, and what kind of timeline would be acceptable? And so, working with the consultant that gave us the proposal, being the go-between between us and the EPA staff, we were able to immediately respond to their request for a timeline. They said we needed to get them first a timeline, a promise of when things are gonna get done. And they said that they would be fine with us filing the draft Emergency Response Plan by the end of the year, December 31st, and then they'll review and comment, and then we'll finalize it in late January. And in the meantime, the RRA document takes, it's, it's a pretty robust document, they have to go through an inventory, what we're doing, what we're not doing, and identify it. So that's gonna take a little longer, and we have on schedule to, to finish that early next spring. And so, right now, we've submitted the timeline, which makes us in compliance, and we're okay. And as long as we stick to the path that we've laid out and/or be in communication, if we come up with something that isn't as we expected, and it's gonna take more time, we need to be in communication with EPA and say what it is and why it is, and get agreement, and change our time schedule order, and it's, it's like that. It's, it's an open communication process to stay in compliance, but to get these documents filed and up to date. And then it'll, it'll create a new world of identifying, you know, hardening of the water system that we may be able to entertain through this risk and resiliency report. More work is probably gonna come out of it, yay! But it is good. It'll, it'll be a great thing for the community, and I think that we've identified a, a really top-notch consultant with all of the right relationships, and so far it's been wonderful working with Jeff Cooley. And so I'm recommending that we forego the very time-consuming task of doing formal RFPs and interviewing a bunch of different consultants, and just kinda stand on the shoulders of our friends in Camarillo and use the same consultant to get us caught up very quickly. And so, the, the timeline is, is in here, and, and the idea is that we're, you know, staff has already been preparing a response to an RFI that was given to us, and giving them all the information that they're gonna need to know to get about this business. We will definitely have a draft ERP ready for filing and certifying by the December 31st deadline, and, and then shortly thereafter, we'll finalize it, and then, it's optional to take the risk and resiliency assessment before council for formal action, but we've included in this project that we do wanna involve the council, and we do wanna inform you of the report and have you formally adopt the RRA when it's ready next spring. So that's included in the scope of work. It's not required by the EPA and the guidelines, but I felt for this community, it would be important to keep the decision-makers in the loop at every step. So that's a, a part of it that could be more optional, and up to you if you wanted to remove that. So, any questions?
I, I spoke with the city manager today, and, and we talked about it. We seem to be catching up a lot. We're, we get behind, we find somebody else to do something for us, and then we catch on the tails, and we, we talk to the county, or we talk to the state, or we talk to the federal government to please let us have more time that we're not prepared. And I'd really like to see us be more upfront and proactive rather than reactive. I really appreciate your coming to the city council with it. I think it's really important to do, but at the same time, I'd like to see if every one of our programs, we could, we could get them in on time. And, and if you know upfront that you need help, let us know so we can, we can work around it. Okay, thank you, Roxanne.
Any other questions?
No, no other questions, just a comment, though, that I appreciate the work that you did to look for a consultant that has that relationship with the EPA, and, you know, and you're able to communicate well with them, and anything at all that we can do to avoid any kind of EPA civil penalties, absolutely. So, kinda piggybacking off of, off of what lens, you know, we could be on top of it and do what we need to do to make sure that we're in compliance. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like...
Oh, sure.
Do we have to take, can we take them all, three at one time? Okay.
Okay. Call for a motion?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so I'll make that motion for, to approve one, two, and three. Approve the budget adjustment, authorize the city manager to sign the contract, and authorize the city manager to approve the amendment to do the contract.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item number eight C, authorization to purchase a building and safety code enforcement inspection vehicle. I'm just laughing, cuz that thing's old.
I don't remember how many times we've already been asked about this.
I had to ride around in it one time.
It's been a while.
It's not as old as my Mustang. It's true. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, on June 9th, 2021, you as a council approved the American Rescue Plan and Special Capital Improvement Program. It's a list of all the projects that we're to fund, and one of those items was the, to purchase a truck for our building and code enforcement officer. And we went out to a, proposals, and all the proposals are well below what we had estimated was at $50,000, and, and the proposals are between $33,000 and $35,000. The truck that we have today is from 2005 and has only 34,000 miles on it. It's a hard-driven 35 or 34,000 miles, cuz it only stayed here in town. It really didn't go anywhere, but, you know, it's dark cold, turn it off, and it was like that all day long. And then through the Great Recession, no one drove it for a couple of years. That causes a lot of mechanical problems to the truck. And there were a lot of people through the years driving it, so there's no real accountability to maintenance of, of the truck. So with that, we had desired a, a brand-new truck for our building inspector, and his existing truck would be surplus. City staff recommends the lower, the lower bid, which is Jim Freeland, at $33,260, but allow the city manager to negotiate, and there may be some items that we would like to have on the truck, like light bar, not light bars, like the fire department or police department, but lights. He, and I know the building inspector wants something fancy. or police department, but lights. And I know the building inspector wants something fancy on there. And then his truck would be surplus.
Any questions?
My presentation.
Any questions for staff?
I, I, go ahead.
Go ahead.
You're on. I turn my mic on again. I have a question. I was wondering if, and I can make a motion for this, but I was wondering if we could go with the one at Bunnen so that we keep the money in Fillmore. And I realize that it's 2,000 more, but I, for one, would like to continue to spend and support Fillmore businesses if we can choose to do that. So...
Yeah, I was kind of piggybacking, actually. I mean, that's where I was heading, except I was going to say, have we talked to them? I mean, maybe we can work some other, you know, what we need, you know, additional lighting or whatever we need. Maybe we could work that into it. I do believe that we should keep our money here local. I do. I think, you know, we're benefiting from the sales tax from that. So I think it's important.
We can absolutely use them. And that's why we like the, when we start the negotiating process, they can drop their prices a little bit lower. And we're going to ask for some things. My building inspector is asking for some additional things. That's why we like the city manager to have the ability to negotiate.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's the way to do it.
Actually, that's what I was going to say too. You know, besides that, it's 15,000, 16,000 less than what we had originally budgeted. And so let's get it as low as possible, but let's keep it in Fillmore.
Okay. Okay. With that, do I, can I entertain a motion?
I will make, I will make a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate. And I recommend that it not go over 36,000, but we keep it at Bunnen in Fillmore.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I know the code enforcement officer will be very happy. By the way, the truck's not going to be here for another seven or eight months. It's stuck in the ocean.
Stuck in the ocean. Order now while you can.
It's going to be a little wet.
Well, it won't get any miles on it. Okay, we'll move on to item number eight D, consideration of ordinance 21-933, zoning ordinance amendment 2102, adoption of state model water efficient landscape ordinance and finding exemption from CEQA.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in 2015, the state law changed regarding the use of water for plant material. We do large projects and we're supposed to be selecting drought-tolerant plants. So since 2015, all landscape architects throughout California and every city, we've been following that state law. It essentially says you're not allowed to have grass. But the city council hasn't approved the ordinance. A lot of cities have. And we're just doing a little cleanup item to adopt this ordinance. We presented this to the planning commission. The planning commission recommends approval. But it really means, and you see this in the real world, that if you looked at the Bridges subdivision, there's really no grass in the front yard. Normally, when we do subdivisions, the whole front yard has grass. Well, the reason is, it's because of this law. And when we do commercial projects, you're going to see there's no grass. It's all drought-tolerant mulch or some other material. And we've been pursuing hardscape. That's why the outdoor rooms are becoming very popular. In Fillmore, we all know our water bills are high and people are naturally getting away from grass anyway. So with that, we've already been following the state law. The planning commissioners reviewed this at their public hearing last month, and they recommend to adopt the ordinance 21-933, which is complying with the state law. I'll take any questions you may have.
Any questions for Kevin?
So I think you kind of answered my question, and that was, some cities have put it into their ordinances and some of them haven't.
They will, if they haven't, they will be. They'll be doing what we're doing tonight.
Because it's interesting. I just went through a landscaping plan through Westlake Village, and they didn't require it. I'm like, well, that's very interesting. So you answered my question, but thank you.
Okay. No other questions? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Sorry, just one more question, clarifying question. Thank you, Mayor. So does this mean, like for our landscaping vendor, so Venco Western, that they're, as part of their contract or any other landscape contract, that a hardscape, that that is, like, is it already existing right now? Or will, once we get this ordinance passed, for all future contracts, that'll be part of it?
Well, those are maintainers. So they're not going to do anything. It's really construction or installation.
Got it.
So when we have a new development, I should have gone over some of the details. So it's when we have landscape over 500 square feet, which that's the size of a two-car garage or rehabbing 2,500 square feet. So it's the installation of new grass or new landscape.
New landscape. Okay, thanks, Kevin. That's it.
So I'll make the motion that we go with staff's recommended action.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Oh, you want me to read the title?
I have a pardon, Kevin.
Okay, so let me scroll down here. Hold on one second. So I will move that we...
Here.
I think I have it right here, Mark. I have it right here. Okay, so I'll move that we approve zoning ordinance amendment 21-02, ordinance number 21-933, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Fillmore, California, adding new section 6.04.2821 to the Fillmore Municipal Code and adopt the state model water efficient landscape ordinance and finding an exemption from CEQA.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item number eight E, discussion of whether to apply for Proposition 68 parks per capita grant.
Thank you for having us on tonight. Tonight, we're asking a city council to authorize the submission of an application for a Proposition 68 parks per capita grant. And we are currently working with California Consulting to apply for this grant. The grant is an allocation of approximately $187,000. The applications are due December 31st of 2021. Park staff work with the Parks and Recreation Commission, and they're recommending that staff apply for this grant at Two Rivers Park to address the ADA needs at the park that were identified, I believe, last year. We went through a study. City council had initial discussion and told staff to work on the signage in the parking lots and some of the items in the restrooms. These are some of the other areas that were told to put on hold until we could find a grant or other funding sources for it. So we're now bringing this forward to city council for your approval. And again, the report was prepared by our city consultant, Disability Access Consultants, DAC. We have about 10 to 15 different items that need to be done. A path of travel, a little parking stall as well, take another look at the restrooms, directional signage. All these things were brought forward during our ADA compliance review for the city. The fiscal impact be approximately $234,000. That will include the grant funding, excuse me, plus our 25% match for the program. We do have funding available in the Two Rivers Park account. That has been approximately $850,000 right now. That was funding given specifically just for that park to be used for Two Rivers Park from the developer out there, Hearthstone. So we're asking you to take a look at that, to use that funding for that, and for us to apply for the grant. And that's all.
Any questions for Dave?
I'm really excited about this. I mean, I think it's finally possibly a grant that maybe we can get. We actually have the matching funds here that we can use. You know, this would fix our problems. I mean, obviously, you know, the use of the dog park was kind of shut down because of a lot of ADA issues. So that was, that created problems for us. And I think this would be a great way to get around this. If we can get them, I'm all for it.
Yep. Okay.
I noticed that if you have a disadvantaged community, you don't have to do the matching monies. But we need that in order to accomplish it, right?
Yes, one thing, we want to make sure the request of money, put our money into it to make it work.
Okay.
My comment, just echoing Diane's, is that I think it's great. And I'm really glad that we may have 850K in the Two Rivers Park, that we are looking for additional grant funding and looking for that and really dipping into our, you know, our fund minimally, you know. I mean, smartly, basically, is what I'm saying. Because it will still take a lot to update that park. We're going to have to use more of those funds. So I appreciate that, staff. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I'm going to call a public speaker, Luanna Brock.
Hi, Luanna.
Hi.
You have three minutes. And when the stern's yellow, you have a minute left. And when it's red, your time's up, okay?
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, council members. My name is Luann Brock. I live at 832 Wood Grove Road. And I'm here tonight to appeal to you to consider unlocking the gate at the Rio Vista Catch Basin that was relocked to the public in the beginning of October. I am one of many citizens who regularly use the Catch Basin as a spot to take our dogs to run. I see on tonight's agenda, under item eight H, as well as the one you just spoke to, you will be discussing the Two Rivers Park grant, which may or may not include the currently shuttered dog park. It is my understanding that the dog park was closed quite some time ago as it failed to meet handicap accessibility standards. It is also a woefully inadequate spot to take a dog, as it really is just a fenced dirt lot with no grass and plenty of red ants. When the Rio Vista Catch Basin was completed, the gates were unlocked and many Fillmore citizens and their dogs began respectfully using the area. It was a great place to allow our pets to run free and meet other local citizens and share the experiences of living in Fillmore. Many of those people are new to the community, living in the Bridges homes, and it has been a great place for folks like me, who have lived here a very long time, to make new friends and encourage them to enjoy the assets of our small-town life. Unfortunately, that asset is now locked with no other alternative. Improving the current dog park seems to continue to be a future concern and not one that meets the community's needs now. The Catch Basin was likely built by the developer, but I imagine that the city pays for it to be maintained. Since the city is not a revenue-generating entity, it is likely that the funds are used are taxpayer dollars, and having access to that area would be in the best interest of our community. I completely understand that if we are lucky enough to get rain, the basin would likely need to close for a period of time. I am one of many dog owners who would like to see the council consider our request. Thank you respectfully.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kristen Dewey.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all this evening. I was also made aware that you would be discussing the writing of a grant to bring the dog park at Two Rivers Park up to code, Agenda Item 8E. And I would like you to, I would like to ask that you consider opening up the Catch Basin at Rio Vista Park year-round for recreational use. I personally use it as a dog park, and it is such a pleasant environment with the grass and all the shade trees. I've met and had many conversations with people using the park. It's been a great way to talk to people new to the area about the wonderful amenities that Fillmore has to offer and hear about their lives before they move to town. I've also noticed other community members using the Catch Basin area of the park for other things, such as practicing their golf swing, batting practice, setting up and working out on an obstacle course, playing with soccer and footballs. There are a few children this summer who challenge themselves to ride from the sidewalk down the hill to the bottom of the grassy area, laughing the whole time, and it makes the park so enjoyable. I also like to use the Catch Basin for exercising my dogs, my dogs, because it's a very safe place for them to be off-leash in an enclosed area. Since the gates have been locked, I've been walking on the bike path next to the riverbed. I walk early in the morning and have seen coyotes on three different occasions alarmingly close to where we're walking. I understand that the Catch Basin needs to be closed when it rains, but I would like you to discuss keeping it open year-round and only locking the gates when it is actually raining. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker is Beatrice Freyas.
Freyas.
That's how I was going to say it at first, but...
Mayor and council members, I'm actually B. Freyas. I'm a registered nurse. I'm retired hospital nurse manager. And I'm here in support of the Two Rivers Dog Park and the outdoor sports arena or area. The dog park is a very important component to the community health of our senior citizens, just as the sports fields are to our youth. And the elderly who live in small apartments or houses, many with small dogs as their principal daily companions, have become even further isolated due to COVID. Taking their dogs to the park is a motivator to get out, sit on a nearby bench if they're unable to walk a distance, take the surroundings in, enjoy the sunshine, breathe some fresh air while watching their pets. These pets for the elderly are indeed support service animals. They are not, they are not just family members. They see them every single day, offering a special form of emotional support, mainly when challenged with feelings of depression. I truly recognize the liabilities, and I am very pleased that the positive reaction to supporting the ADA improvements at the park. I'm also, I also understand that closure of, the necessity for the closure initially because of the ADA issues. However, there are a few things that I am requesting. Of course, the support of the Proposition 68, which is very positive and it sounds very encouraging this evening. Revisiting opening Two Rivers Dog Park now with the same signage that's posted at the Rio Vista Catch Basin, which says, quote, "Enter at your own risk" with a City of Fillmore logo below it. I realize there are some issues. It is dirt. It would be wonderful if that, all those things could be improved. However, for so many people that live on this end of the city, if they're walking to that little area around the church and down towards the park, that is where they're going to gravitate. I need to visit the Catchman Basin because I have not, but I'm going to make an effort to do that and see how much I can enjoy that. I also ask that as improvements are being made, that there be signage around the areas for the people to actually see. So many of our elderly don't, don't have internet access or don't access internet, don't frequent city council meetings, and yet, they're the ones that are impacted so greatly.
Can you wrap it up, Beatrice?
Currently, yes. So, Two Rivers Park is vital to the physical and mental health of our community. I'm encompassing, it encompasses diversity in our community, and it's inclusive of all ages in Fillmore. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So I'll make the motion that we authorize staff to apply for Proposition 68 per capita grant funding and conceptually authorize the allocation matching funds for the proposed project.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item number eight F, review and initiation of proceedings for the annexation of Mountain View Apartments Development Permit Number 1803 to Landscape and Lighting Assessment District Number Two, LL and Number Two.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Brian McCarthy in the Planning Department. Tonight's item is the annexation of the Mountain View Apartments project into the city's Landscape and Lighting District Two, Zone 3A. An assessment levies a tax that will be in the county tax roll. It's for specific improvements that benefit that particular property or that development project with no real general measurable benefit to the public. So that tax will be levied on an annual basis, starting in 2022 and 2023. You have two resolutions here before you tonight. The first one is to initiate the proceedings of the annexation process. And the second resolution is to preliminarily approve the engineer's report, which informs those numbers. If you approve the resolutions tonight, we'll initiate the ballot process. We'll have 45 days to vote. There's only one property owner, so we will get one vote. There's only one property owner, so we will get one vote. If that property owner doesn't protest the annexation, you'll hear that at the next hearing, which is scheduled for January the 11th. General maintenance that the costs will cover include energy costs and maintenance of the lighting facilities, removal, repair, relocation of lights, poles, bulbs, fixtures, and related equipment. The Zone 3A also allows for the graffiti removal or covering up of graffiti. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Brian?
I have a question. Brian, several people have contacted me about the lights of the bridges particularly, and that they're shining up, or they're shining and it's taking away the night vision. And I read an article that the electrification of towns, that the light goes up, are changing migration patterns and even changing insect breeding habits, which I don't quite understand. There are some insects I'd be glad they didn't breed, but... So I'd like to, when you're putting those lights in, pay attention to that and see if you can do something that isn't exploding upwards.
Okay, we can look at different light standards. I know Edison does the maintenance, but they also use the company in town, Amron, or NOV, and they may have a solution to that. We can look at that.
Maybe just painting the tops.
Yeah, something to cover and shield to go down. We do have a specific Fillmorean street light standard that we use that would apply to three of the lights, the one on Mountain View and two on Santa Clara Street. The fourth one is on the highway on State Route 126, and that's a typical Caltrans. It's called a Cobra Head. It kind of comes out, and then that one points downward. But we can look at some night sky protection type light if they have that.
I know people would appreciate it. Those who have contacted me are quite upset about it. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No. Just, I mean, just listening to Lynn is the follow-up comment. I appreciate that, looking for lights that point down, because also thinking about the lighting for Mountain View, right, they have the balconies. And so when you think about it, if we don't, those balconies will, you know, be lit up with a lot of light at night, you know? So I like the idea of trying to see what we can do to point downwards.
Shield, okay.
Okay.
All right.
We'll entertain a motion.
Do we need to read titles, Tiffany?
Okay. Okay. I'll make that motion then, that the city adopt Resolution Numbers 213848 and 3849.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item number eight G, consideration of whether to declare the real property located at North Wheat's Corner, a Mountain View and Santa Clara Streets, to be surplus and finding exemption from SEQA.
Mr. Mayor, I'm presenting this item tonight. This is the property commonly referred to as the railroad property, that, as you mentioned in the title of the item, it's located at the northeast corner of Mountain View and Santa Clara. It's a .8-acre parcel that was acquired by the Fillmore Redevelopment Agency in 2005. In 2006, the redevelopment agency entered into an agreement with the developer that was dissolved earlier this year when the developer elected to walk away, so that no project was developed on that property, and it's remained vacant. Pursuant to state laws, because it's redevelopment agency property, and redevelopment agencies have now been dissolved, were required to sell that property and then remit the money that's received for the purchase to the county to be divided among the various taxing entities where that property is located. The city would receive about 20% of the purchase price. The last appraisal we had was done in 2019. It was $330,000. So at this point, pursuant to state law, if the council adopts the resolution tonight and declares the property surplus, we have a list of mandated public agencies that we would need to offer the property to sale for, for a period of 60 days. And if anyone on that list requests to negotiate with us, then we enter into a 90-day negotiation period. At the end of that period, hopefully, we have a purchase agreement. If we don't, then we consider other options to sell the property. So tonight, the decision before you is whether to declare this property surplus and commence that process and also make a finding of exemption from SEQA. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? I have a question. Tiffany, on the image on here with the red dots, it looks like there's a good portion of this that has railroad tracks over the top of it. Is that correct, or is it just kind of the way it's put out here?
Railroad tracks actually in it?
Yeah.
So I, and Kevin, help me if I'm wrong, but I think it's, there's, the red dots are rectangular, but I don't think the parcel is necessarily rectangular, because I think there's an easement for the railroad.
It's one parcel, which includes the project where the residential development was, plus the maintenance yard for the railroad project. So it does include some railroad tracks on the property for the maintenance yard.
But there's an easement, so we can't get rid of that?
We can get rid of it, yes.
Okay, so the easement, if we...
There's no easement.
For the railroad tracks, how do they exist?
They're using it through the original agreement for the property. But there's no easement for the railroad tracks to cut through for the maintenance yard.
So if we called this surplus and tried to sell it, we...
You can remove the tracks.
It would have to be moved around somehow, they figured out. Okay.
So that's just a spur. That's not part of the...
It's just a spur. A spur to the maintenance yard.
Okay. So that's a very interesting question.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at this going, eh, this is kind of weird. Okay, that's my question. I guess a follow-up question is, we could then, if we called this surplus property, approach the new railroad people to see if it would be of interest to them to hang on to it?
Well, first, we have to offer it to the list of public agencies, and that's mostly recreational and housing uses. But then if there's not a user, yes, that's potential. It's zoned right now for either residential uses or railroad-adjacent uses.
I guess my main concern in looking at this, the way these spurs are placed, is that whoever is operating that railroad needs to have some pretty good forewarning that, hey, you're going to have to move all your stuff. Because, I mean, this whole yard over here would basically, from what I can see, be inaccessible.
Well, I think that portion of the property is subject to one of the leases right now with the prior operator of the railroad. And so the future, I think, if I recall, that's in place till 2024. And so what they're going to do with it, since they didn't get the lease for the tracks renewed, is being negotiated. But in theory, since it is a spur and there isn't an easement for it, we could have them remove that.
Okay. Yeah, okay. So just things to think about then, as this moves forward, because we don't want to surprise somebody. Okay.
Any other questions? I have one, and I always ask you this, and I always forget the answer. Is the appraisal still good?
Since it was from two years ago, that's not bad. I mean, DOF doesn't require you to update the appraisal from what was in your property management plan, and ours was from 2015. And I don't think this one actually had an appraisal at that time. I think it just said fair market value. So we don't have to update it again, but we could if you wanted to.
Yeah, it's going to be pretty much of a cost, I think.
Yeah, it's not the most desirable location.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just one more clarifying question, that this, as you mentioned in the staff report, Tiffany, it's, we put it out to those public agencies that you have listed, and there is a potential, if they do want to negotiate price, that we could do what we just did recently with another property, was go to the Ventura County Oversight Agency and see about that selling price.
I think right now they're so happy to have properties sold and off the books, because they're also paying us administrative costs while we deal with the properties, that I think they would take a deal if we could get a good use that we would propose.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So I'll make the recommendation that the successor agency approve Resolution 21-1, declaring the property to be surplus, authorizing offers for the purchase of the property pursuant to the Surplus Lands Act and finding these activities to be exempt from SEQA.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item number eight H, consideration whether to authorize an application for land and water conservation fund grant for the city's Two Rivers Park project.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're asking city council to authorize us to apply for the land and water conservation grants. We're using California Consulting again, and this is the first step in order to apply for the funding. The grant will be due towards the end of February. And if you recall, earlier this year, we agreed to do a contract with Willdan to take a look at the playing fields out there. They're currently looking at various design elements for us. Going to bring back some recommendations to city council. We anticipate having that prior to submittal for the grant application, so we can include the cost for the grant. One of the things with this grant, we need to include the total price of the project that we want to do. And then, once you do that, you can receive 50% of the cost. That's one of the reasons why city council has been holding on to the Two Rivers count and not spanning it down quickly, is we've had this issue now, since I've been here, since 2013. This is our second time trying to go for this application. The first time, I went to all brand-new parks. So hopefully, this time, we can get through this particular program, because we do need it. The fields are, you know, beat up. The drip irrigation system has not worked as designed. So hopefully, we get this. We get our playing fields out there up to par to where we like to see them. So we're asking tonight to have the resolution approved for us to go ahead and move forward with the application.
Any questions for Dave? Being done, and I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll move that city council adopts Resolution Number 21-3849. Read the title. Oh, okay.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item number nine, committee, commission, and board reports. Open up the council.
I have a couple. For the commission and board reports, the VCTC is finalizing, hoping to finalize the train contract. And it's supposed to come to the VCTC in the December meeting. We hope that's what he does in the final phase.
Sorry, and I'm here a while, so, yeah. I caught her bug there. So I'll say that again. VCTC is hoping in December to be able to finalize the train contract to have the Sierra Northern come. They're a very professional group. It's very exciting what they have to offer. I'm particularly excited. They have their own, they have a patent out on a two-bicycle tandem side-by-side that goes on the tracks. And they say they do that on the weekdays and that there's always a waiting list to do it. So it's kind of fun. I think it'll bring tourism to our town, but it also will be fun for us. So I'm looking forward to that. Also, because of Veterans Day tomorrow, day after tomorrow, all vets are going to be encouraged to take the bus, and they can ride free. For the Air Pollution Control Board, we had a very long meeting today because the California Air Resources Board is sending out new guidelines as to the marine vehicles, so like fishing boats, ferries, everything that floats on water is going to have to reduce their carbon footprint, their pollution footprint. They had a quite long discussion on this, because most of the carbon footprint is in disadvantaged areas. And they studied it, and it's true that those, like Oxnard area around the port, the children there have the higher rate of asthma than organizations that are farther, or cities that are farther away from particles. So that's exciting, but it's not exciting if you're a boat owner and you're trying to figure it out. So that's why the meeting went so long. And then, Air Pollution Control Board continues to give out grants, and, not loans, outright grants, to farming equipment, cars, buses, school buses, if they're willing to convert to the modification to have them be less pollutant. So if you know of an organization that might, or an individual, a farmer, whatever, encourage them to apply, because Fillmore doesn't get very much of that, and they give out millions every year. So please encourage people to apply.
Anybody else?
Sure, I'll make just a quick update for the Fillmore Pyru Basin. I'm sorry about that. Fillmore Pyru Basin Sustainability, Groundwater Sustainability Agency. There, we are in the final month, month and a half to submit the GSA, the groundwater sustainability, I'm sorry, GSP, Groundwater Sustainability Plan. And there's, I think I reported this last time, that we had two stakeholder engagements. The Pyru Pumpers and the Fillmore Pumping Associations both spoke, as well as environmental stakeholders. And we look to be in a very good spot with our groundwater for both Fillmore Basin and Pyru Basin. And then after some good rain, that our groundwater replenishes. And so we're at a good spot. So good work on getting this plan done, and I'll update you with any other information. Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to item number 10. City council.
I have a, I can do it right there. Okay. So I have a recommendation I would like to place on our next agenda, if possible. I know we have a lot to do. An opportunity for us to discuss the current state of the overall condition of our downtown business district. If staff could pull together and bring back any basic and relevant information on potential funding, current funding sources, and future funding sources for improvements, and any current challenges we may have for maintaining infrastructure of the downtown, roads, sidewalks, trash, landscaping, et cetera, this would be helpful. And I would love to get the ball rolling on this and making downtown beautiful again.
And I have, I would like to ask for a future agenda item that we look again at the Catch Basin. At this, I have it on, thank you, Lonnie, that I'd like to have it on the agenda again for discussion of having the possibility of using it when there is no water. At this point, the park that's adjacent to it has more water than the actual Catch Basin. And people are damaging the water and getting themselves wet and falling down, hurting themselves, because there's water there. Whereas the Catch Basin is nice and dry, has lovely trees, few little flowers. So I'd like to discuss that again. So I'd like to have it on the agenda, if at all possible.
I would like to have that on the agenda as well.
So I'll, I don't have anything to add to the agenda, but I, you know, Simone, I'll support having some more information brought from staff about economic development. Sure.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Simone's item. I mean, we can talk about it. We've talked about it before. Next agenda, you know, next agenda, not going to happen. I see Dave shaking his head, going, ain't going to happen. But, you know, obviously, I think it's something that we have been discussing for some time, so we may as well talk about that. As far as Lynn's item, I totally understand that, and I'm willing to bring it back and talk about it. But I am not absolutely, I am, we'll talk about it.
We've already had a discussion on it.
We discussed it, and I don't know that my stance would change on that.
That's okay, if we can discuss it again.
Okay. Moving on to item number 11, unless everybody has done, unless 11, city manager, city manager verbal report.
Okay. Well, for the downtown business district, we'll get that to you guys in January. We were actually going to roll all that into our discussion with the American Rescue Plan, funding for that. We can bring, we already have the staff report done for the Catch Basin. Nothing will change from a recommendation standpoint on that, so we can do it easily on the next council meeting. And then, just a couple of items, upcoming events, it is the holiday season. I guess that's the proper way to say it in government. Wednesday, December 1st, at 6:00 p.m., we have our annual tree lighting here at City Hall. Then on Saturday, December 4th, we have our Winter Fest and Lions Club Christmas Parade. That starts at 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. with the markets and activities, there were music performances. And at 10:00 a.m. is the actual parade, and I understand Santa Claus should be able to make it. He's not on one of the boats. make it, he's not on one of the boats out in the docks. On Sunday, December 5th, we'll be our chicken dinner. Details are coming forward, not too sure if we're going to have it at the Memorial Building, or at the fire station at this point in time, so we'll get information on that in our social media and local newspaper. Then on Friday, December 10th, we have a Santa stroll, be five to nine, five to nine p.m., we have pictures with Santa, shopping, a holiday movie in the park as well that day. And then on Saturday, December 11th, we'll have our annual community holiday giveaway. That's going to be from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Two Rivers Park. Pre-registration is going to be required. This year, there's also going to be a QR code to register for the event, so you need to have your phone and do the QR code on there. Registration ends Monday, December 6th for the event. Understand, there's another meeting to kind of finalize everything this week, and then the word will get out to everybody on terms of the QR code, how to sign up, and move things forward on that. And then finally, this Thursday, at 10:00 a.m., we have the Veterans Day Parade down Central Avenue, starting from the Memorial Building. It'll end here at City Hall. I'll have a couple speakers here, recognition of our war heroes as well, early that morning. And that's all I have tonight.
What time, Thursday?
It starts at 10 o'clock, the parade.
Thank you.
I have a question for the parade. We're not, we're not supposed to go to the breakfast, too. Okay, good.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number 12, closed session. We're going to go into closed session for two items. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54946.9D4, because city is considering whether to initiate litigation in one case. We'll also go into closed session for conference with legal, with real property negotiator. The City Council, as a successor agency for the dissolved Fillmore Redevelopment Agency, will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code 54946.8, to enable the City Council to conduct negotiations and give direction to its negotiators regarding the certain real property at 510 Santa Clara Street.
There are no reportable actions. We're going to adjourn the meeting to our next regularly scheduled meeting at 6:30 on Tuesday, December 14th. Meeting adjourned.